Where are we, fifteen? All right. Call to order, the second session of the spring Wakefield Town Meeting. We are, ah, where are we? We are in fifteen. To see if the town will vote to, will, will vote and will vote to authorize the Town Council pursuant to general law chapter forty, section fourteen, and other applicable authority to do the following in connection with the certain zoning decisions of the town of Wakefield. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Mr. Lucy will explain it to you. Tom Lucy, you are up.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Lucy, one forty-two Elm Street. I move that the town authorize the Town Council pursuant to general law chapter forty, section fourteen, and any, any other applicable authority to do the following in connection with that certain decision of the Wakefield Zoning Board of Appeals filed with the Wakefield Town Clerk on August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and filed with the Middlesex South Registry District of the Land Court as document number one nine two three zero three five related to the property shown on the town of Wakefield assessor's map zero one lot A M one, assessor's parcel ID number zero one dash thirty-six dash A M one, and also known and numbered as two hundred to four hundred Corner Power Parkway, Wakefield, Massachusetts. A, accept a restriction on a portion of the property for open space and conservation purposes. B, accept an easement for public pedestrian access and use of a portion of the property. C, enter into a lease agreement allowing the Wakefield Police Department to use and occupy a portion of the property as a public safety office for nominal consideration. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Lucy, you may present your motion.
Thank you. As I said, my name's Tom Lucy. I'm chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals here on behalf of the board regarding the two hundred to four hundred Corner Power Parkway special permit granted by the board and as the sponsors of Article fifteen. As a visual aid, a handout was made available that matches the plan that I hope is on the screen. Yep. Two hundred to four hundred Corner Power Parkway is a very large piece of property consisting of approximately twenty-four acres of land that includes the yellow, blue, and red highlighted areas you see on the plan. The green highlighted area of the plan is approximately three point eight seven acres of land along the shore of Lake Corner Power and it is owned by the town of Wakefield. The current public pathway is located there and this path will remain unchanged. In July of twenty twenty-two, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a special permit for the two hundred to four hundred Corner Power Parkway, allowing a residential multifamily development combined with an approximately thirty-five hundred square foot restaurant on the property. During our special permit public hearing process for the project, it became clear that many stakeholders, including members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, members of the public, and the friends of Lake Corner Power had goals that included the following. One, for Lake Corner Power's wallet, water quality to be improved and protected. Two, for as much land as possible at that end of the lake to be preserved as conservation and open space land. Three, to provide for additional public access to the land and amenities at that end of the lake. The special permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals with the conditions stated therein achieved all these goals and more. I would like to specifically thank the friends of Lake Corner Power for their participation and input during the special permit public hearing process, which promoted and contributed towards some of the special permit conditions that I will discuss tonight. Examples of the special permit conditions include the following. A condition that required the applicant to make a one point three million dollar contribution to the town of Wakefield toward water quality improvements to Lake Corner Power. That payment has been made and received by the town. A condition that required significant stormwater management infrastructure, including rain gardens on the property, coupled with an operations and maintenance plan for the property, both of which never existed before, that will now properly treat stormwater runoff and remove, remove contaminants before they enter the lake. A condition that required that approximately twelve point seven acres of the twenty-four acre property to be protected for conservation or open space purposes in perpetuity pursuant to a restriction to be put on the property for the benefit of the town. The approximate twelve point seven acres of protected land include the blue and red highlighted areas on the plan. A condition that required the construction of an additional recreational pathway within the red highlighted area on the plan with public access and public use of that red highlighted area in perpetuity pursuant to an easement to be put on the property for the benefit of the town. A condition that requires a public amenity area and public restrooms inside a building to be maintained by the owner at no cost to the town. The public amenity area would be a place where the public will have access to climate-controlled areas and the ability to purchase light refreshments. A special permit condition also requires the owner to provide internet service to the public within the red highlighted area on the plan and inside the public amenity area at no charge. A condition that requires the owner to provide a public safety office within the building for the Wakefield Police Department at no charge to the town that will be adjacent to the public amenity area. This was requested by Police Chief Scory to give police officers a substation type presence at this end of the lake. As contemplated by the special permit, these community benefits require legal instruments in the form of a restrictive covenant, easement, and a lease for the benefit of the town that will be to the satisfaction of Town Council Tom Mullin to then be presented to the elected Town Council for its approval and acceptance. The acceptance of these legal instruments by the Town Council requires authorization by Town Meeting for them to do so. To that end, the Zoning Board of Appeals is sponsoring Article fifteen, and I respectfully request that you vote yes on Article fifteen. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure if legal things come up, uh, Council, uh, Town Council Mullin is here as well.
Planning Board, anybody here for the Planning Board? Yeah, okay.
The Planning Board recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion before you under Article fifteen?
Daniel Lieber, one Elm Street. Thank you for a really compact and dense presentation with a lot of information. I do appreciate it. A few questions. First, on the police substation or police, uh, presence, is there, is the amount of that lease to be one dollar or is there, it says a nominal amount, it, it, and this may be a legal question for, for Tom?
Tom Mullin, nine Jordan Terrace, I'm the Town Council. Uh, it would be, it, the lease would reflect the payment of one dollar, period, not periodically thereafter, and in fact, that dollar would not change hands.
Excellent. Next question, if there is any outfitting required for that substation, would that be done at the developer's expense or would that come back to Town, Town Meeting or would that be a part of the police department's expense if there's radios or other equipment required at that particular facility?
Yeah, they can, I, I.
You got that, Steve? Yeah.
My understanding of the condition is the following. The public safety office will be delivered to the town of Wakefield's Police Department in a warm shell condition, fully prepared for occupancy. The space will feature finished and painted drywall, vinyl tile, acoustical ceiling system, rubber base installation, all completed before turnover. Additionally, the space will be equipped with power and data outlets, a telephone line, and a wireless account point located outside the space for town use. The town of Wakefield will be responsible for furnishing the space, and a final cleaning will be performed by the owner upon the department's moving.
Do we know approximately what the fit out of that, the fit out cost for that will be?
Steve?
Uh, no, but it will be in the existing sixty million, I mean sixteen million, with Chief Scory, uh, budget, so we'll, we have it in there for the radios and computers and everything.
Thank you. And last question is regarding the conservation area. What enforcement mechanisms or other components is there to make sure that the flora, fauna, and other elements of that space are actually managed? Is that something that will fall under the conservation commission's purview or who will be responsible for being able to enforce those conditions so that there isn't, say, salt runoff or other items put, put there to make sure that it's actually preserved as intended?
Tom, do you want to? Tom, do you know? Thanks.
So the, um, the conservation restriction is accepted, would be accepted by the Town Council, uh, which would have the right to enforce, uh, and would have the right to, uh, bring a lawsuit, um, for a, an injunction to prevent, uh, any damage to the property and to require maintenance of the property. Uh, and in the event that the town was forced to litigate, the town would be reimbursed its reasonable expenses.
And from my understanding, the expenses to have you do that litigation would probably be enormous to, enormous if we were to win, in that, hopefully it will not be, come to pass.
Well, yeah, my fees are, you know, upwards of, uh, seven figures, sure.
And the, the last que, last question I have is on the map, there is a section of the red hashed area above the green diagonally, uh, component area towards the right end of that. It looks like the, there is a section where the green path is very narrow, narrow, narrower than the rest of the area, and do we know what the width of that path piece is? I wasn't able to make it out on the map. So it's to, to the far right edge of the green area, because it, it looks like that there's either a component of the building or otherwise that is not there. I want to make sure that it's wide enough for use, wide enough for ADA compliance, that it actually meets the needs, the, for both educate, for the purposes of recreation as well as ADA compliance and other elements.
So I can't tell you exactly how many linear feet it is, um, but I can tell you that the green area includes the entirety of the width of the existing, uh, path that we're all familiar with, that is used for walking, biking, running. Uh, so the net effect of this would actually be to create a second path in the red area, but the green area is plenty big enough to encompass the entirety of the path we're, we're all familiar with.
And the green area, it, it looks like with conservation area, it will overlap some of the existing path? Because they, with, with this just being a diagram without a photographic overlay?
No, the existing path would continue on to the right of the green area around Lake Quanapawat and would not actually intersect the blue area, which is going to be the conservation restricted area. We don't want anybody going into the conservation restricted area.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. There, a lot of questions have, have come up about this, and I appreciate the, the ZBA and the developer working together to really meet the needs of the town in a mutually beneficial way. This project has been going on for several years, and I think that this is actually an excellent proposal as it has been brought forward, and really appreciate the members of the ZBA working to make sure that we have the benefit for the town, so.
Now, thank you, and I, I would add that the friends of Lake Corner Power did a ton of work on this as well.
You're next.
Alton Alco, seventeen Wiley Street. Just a quick question, because I'm having a hot time with the, printing on the small version. I understand that the pink is the new path that went to be put in. After just hearing you now, the green was where the picnic tables were, if I'm not mistaken, where they used to sit on the grass and rest between the path and the lake, if I, if I'm a, but why is it listed as a path maintenance area? What does that mean?
Well, first of all, the, the green area is town land. The, the, the red area is not just a path, it's part of the twelve point seven acres, um, that it's going to be put aside for that, in that particular case, we're going to secure an easement, hopefully, to allow public access and use of that area. Um, so it's not just a path, it's a whole green area, um, that'll be, have grass, be landscaped, have the pathway.
So you're saying that in reality, when this is all said and done, the pink and the green area will be combined, and it'll all be part of a path that will get you from one side to the other?
Yeah, there'll be two different paths. Like I said, the original, the, the path that's on the, the town of Wakefield land now will be unchanged.
Right.
We've mandated that they build a second path.
The pink.
Within that red area, that then, one of the things we're asking for is to empower the Town Council to get an easement so that in perpetuity, residents will have access to that land.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Scott McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. So part of that was answered through this. I, um, so the bottom, the bottom edge of that green is roughly the shoreline of the lake, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so the existing paved pathway through, is through there, staying, they're just, you're just adding an easement on top of the, towards, closer towards what the building is to expand that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Ah, Bob Mitchell, six Paulding. I came in late, just a few, few questions, just want to understand this. The green goes back to the, and Steve maybe addresses, and Tommy Mullin, the green is, goes back to the original two leases in the fifties, correct? Just a quick question on that. Has that lease been modified since the fifties? I don't, I don't, this is very complex, I don't want to go into it in detail, but great, thank you, Tommy.
Yes, the, uh, the green area is town owned, and in the nineteen fifties, the town executed two leases, uh, in favor of, um, the, uh, American Mutual Insurance Company, which then owned the land in question to the north of it. Um, and they were ninety-nine year leases, allowing American Mutual, uh, to use and occupy, uh, that green area. Uh, more recently, in, I'm not sure what year, uh, there was an, um, uh, an amendment to that lease which struck a condition that had been included in the nineteen fifties leases. That condition was that the property always be used as the home office of a life insurance company. Of course, American Mutual was gone. Um, and so with that stricken, it, um, the lease is properly, um, being exercised by, uh, the, the current owner, the developer.
Okay, and then, while I got you up, is, I understand the blue is a conservation easement, right? Which is, and that's, the town, town owns that property, right? The pink or the bluish?
But, no, the, you're right, that the blue, uh, areas are conserv, are going to be subject to a conservation restriction.
Restriction.
Uh, however, that's not town owned land.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're going to retain ownership. That was a conservation restriction in perpetuity?
It is.
So that's, that's locked down unless the state legislature modifies it? Is that what, is that the only way that could be modified? Or is that a town?
Well, it's between, the, the restriction is actually between us, the town, and the developer, the owner.
Okay.
It runs with the land, so when the developer sells to somebody else, that party becomes bound by the restriction.
Okay. And, and, okay, and just, uh, I guess that's it on the technical side, just a couple more questions then. So the pathway in the red, do we, is that, do we know, is that going to comply with ASHTO standards? Do you know the width of that? Do you know what material that is? Is that going to be like a bike path or just like a, a pumice thing?
No, I don't know those questions off the top of my head, but as being newly constructed, it would obviously be accessible.
Okay, yeah, great. And then, uh, did, did we, this is a little unrelated, did we address non, non-resident auto traffic going around that, going around the snake belly? Is that, do we have, are we going to lose access to that? Well, I guess we never had it, so you can speak to it better than I can, in my mumbling.
Yeah. So it, uh, the, Lake Quanapawat is a great pond, uh, so we couldn't exclude the public even if we wanted to.
But driving an automobile around the snake belly?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about use of the pedestrian path.
Yeah, no, I'm mumbling around. Did anything address the, an auto, auto, a non-res, a non, uh, CCNF resident driving a car around the snake's belly?
No.
Okay, so that's still, that's still restricted? And then, uh... That's it, I just want to thank the town and CCNF. We were so lucky to have CCNF as a developer up there. So much as I'd like to see that land stay open, they were really, uh, listened to the town and did a great job on pedestrian access, conservation access, and environmental issues, so, uh, we were, we were fortunate to have CCNF. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that there, there are forty-nine spaces on the property that we dedicated for public use.
Oh, oh, uh, do we, the, the lot way off to the right near Fred's Franks, that's still town owned land, is it not? That little parking lot?
Yeah.
That's town, that, that's town land, great. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Any further discussion under Article fifteen? The motion before you is that the town, to see, that the town authorize the Town Council pursuant to general laws, chapter forty, section fourteen, and any other applicable authority to do as is set out, set forth by Mr. Lucy in his motion. All in favor? All opposed? Just a majority, right, Tommy? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Lucy. Good job. Article, Article sixteen, the return of Renaud. To see if the town will vote in connection with the reconstruction of the Wakefield Memorial High School Building to improve the intersection of Farm Street and Hemlock Road as follows, as pursuant to general laws, chapter eighty-two, sections twenty-one through twenty-three, altering and relocating the layout of Farm Street by adding to the town owned shown parcel A on the roadway alteration Farm Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts dated, and the remainder of that legal language that applies to this article. Mr. Renaud?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Moderator, Bill Renaud, Town Engineer. I move, in connection with the reconstruction of Wakefield Memorial High School Building, the town improve the intersection of Farm Street and Hemlock Road as follows. A, pursuant to general law, chapter eighty-two, sections twenty-one through twenty-three, and any other applicable law, by altering and relocating the layout of Farm Street by adding it to the town owned land shown as parcel A on a plan entitled Roadway Alteration Plan, Farm Street, in Wakefield, Massachusetts, dated March thirteenth, uh, thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, a copy of which is on file with the Town Clerk. Such land consisting of approximately eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-eight square feet, parcel A. B, pursuant to general laws, chapter forty, section fifteen A, and any other applicable law, by transferring the care, custody, management, and control of parcel A from the Town Council for purposes of serving as school grounds to the care, custody, management, and control of the Town Council for the purpose of serving as part of a public way to with Farm Street, the Town Council having determined that parcel A is no longer needed for school ground purposes. C, pursuant to general law, chapter forty, section fifteen, and any other applicable law, by authorizing the Town Council to grant an easement for nominal consideration to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting by and through its Department of Conservation and Recreation over the land shown as DCR, easement expansion, on a plan entitled Easement Plan slash Hemlock Road in Wakefield, Massachusetts, dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, a copy of which is on file with the Town Clerk. Such land consisting of approximately six thousand two hundred and seventy-one square feet, the easement area. Such easement to be for all purposes for which streets and ways are may, are or may customarily be used in the town of Wakefield. And, D, pursuant to general law, chapter forty, section fifteen A, and any other applicable law, by transferring the care, custody, manage and control of the easement area from the Town Council for purposes of serving as school grounds to the care, custody, management, and control of the Town Council for the purpose of serving as part of a way to with Hemlock Road, the Town Council having determined that the easement area is no longer needed for school ground purposes.
Thank you.
It's quite the motion. All right. Uh, Article sixteen requests Town Meeting approval for a right-of-way modification of Farm Street and an easement expansion for Hemlock Road to support the Farm Street-Hemlock Road and Nahon Street intersection realignment. As part of the design process for the new high school, the opportunity for an intersection realignment and a roundabout installation was identified to improve area traffic and improve access to the new high school. Tonight's request proposes repurposing portions of the school property for roadway uses. The yellow section in the slide above me would become part of the Farm Street right-of-way, while the green section would become part of a hem, of the Hemlock Road easement, providing access to the new high school, the vocational school, and Break Heart Reservation. The new roundabout was incorporated into the design and budget of the high school previously approved by special Town Meeting in twenty twenty-three, so there's no tax impact, uh, there's no impacts of the tax levy associated with this article. I respectfully request your support for Article sixteen to expand the Farm Street right-of-way and Hemlock Road easement, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, he's on his way up. Don't forget those guys, I only forget Sully.
Planning Board recommends favorable action.
Any questions?
Yes, I want to, uh, register my vote.
And you are?
As opposed to Article fifteen.
Excuse me, excuse me, and you identify yourself?
Dennis Clardy, one Havas Road.
Thank you.
I just wanted to register my vote as opposed to Article fifteen.
Okay, well, you had your chance, and we raised yes or no.
I raised my hand.
Right.
Yes.
Right, and there were, there was everybody except a few people were in charge of it. How'd it go? Yeah, so, yeah, it's a majority, it's not, we don't have to count.
Okay.
Yeah. Unlike the other night, when we counted you twice.
All right, thank you.
By yourself.
Well, the reason I do that is because, uh, the...
Dennis, we're on sixteen now, okay?
The reason I do that is because, uh, it's reviewed by the Attorney General.
Dennis, we're on sixteen. We're on sixteen now. Address your comments.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Scott McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. Did, did you just publicly say you counted him twice? I'm just kidding.
Twice the other night on two separate ones.
That's fine.
Solo, solo counts.
Were, were you, um, I, I just wanted to let you, or make you aware, if you're not aware, that the permanent, the permanent building committee is actively working to convert that temporary parking lot into permanent, with an entrance, currently where it is, is probably within a hundred feet of that intersection, which is not shown on here. So I just wanted to know if that's been taken into account with this and whether they've reached out or whether you were aware of that.
Yeah, I am, I am aware, seen the plan of it. We've had some comments, um, at this point, but just kind of side conversations. This will go to the Traffic Advisory Committee for review, um, the parking lot will go to the Traffic Advisory Committee for review, and there'll be a public meeting on that.
Okay, I, I just, because I, I wasn't seeing on the drawing, I just wanted to see if it impacted this at all, so.
Yeah, I got that much after, way after I prepared the slides, so.
All right, thank you.
Any further comment on Article sixteen?
Hi, Kim Hackett, Summer Street. Uh, my question is, when you're coming from Nahon Street to get onto Farm Street, there's that utility pole with the firebox on it?
Yep.
That you have to like kind of squeak by in order to see past it? Is that going to be moved back?
Yeah, we're realigning that whole intersection, utilities moving the whole, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
There being no further comment, the motion before you is if the town will vote in connection with the reconstruction of Wakefield Memorial High School Building to improve the intersection of Farm Street and Hemlock Road as set forth by Mr. Renaud in his motion. Two-thirds, yeah, okay. This is a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, okay, so we need to count, okay? Tellers, you are up. Yeah, who's missing? All right, we need one more. Do we have, do we have six? All right, we need one more. Do we have, do we have six? David? Hold on. Oh. Yeah. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. Thank you. Who's the assistant moderator down here? Look at him. Mr. Barbecue. Okay, all right, now, raise your hand and keep it in the air and make sure your count, your vote has been counted. In favor, yes. Always go first with in favor. It's a tradition.
In the, in the left, twenty-eight.
You, you gotta, here, you, excuse me, just a minute. Clerk's is explaining something to me. What do you got?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Okay. Got a number? Thirty on the left. All opposed? Raise your hand. Keep it in the air until you're sure your vote has been counted.
Two in the left.
Three, three. Oh. No, she, she said three on the left. Yeah, two, two and three, right. One oh four to seven, motion carries. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows. And then you can all read along here, and while Mr. Renaud recites it in his motion.
I don't, I don't think I'm reciting the whole thing in the motion. Um, that, that
Okay, good.
Yeah, that the town amend the zoning bylaw in map as described in this article.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Renaud?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article seventeen requests town meeting approval of various changes to the floodplain overlay district bylaw to have the town remain within the National Flood Insurance Program. The town was notified in January of this year of final drafts of the Middlesex County Flood Insurance Study and flood insurance rate maps will have an effective date of July eighth of twenty twenty-five. The town is required to adopt the new flood study end maps prior to the effective date to remain within the National Flood Insurance Program. In addition to the adoption of the Middlesex Study and Maps, FEMA is also requiring revisions to the floodplain by, floodplain bylaw to incorporate certain federal standards. A model Massachusetts bylaw was developed by FEMA in the State's Department of Conservation and Recreation to outline specific language to add. Within the model bylaw, there were seventeen standards that are required to be incorporated into the town's bylaw. Uh, a couple of the highlights from the FEMA changes include incorporating a series of new floodplain management definitions, requiring the use of best available flood data, uh, requiring the town to submit any new flood information to FEMA and DCR, the designation of a community floodplain administrator, which will be my position, the town engineer, designation, I'm sorry, uh, require a permit for all proposed development in the floodplain overlay district. Our bylaw will continue to require a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals as we do within the current bylaw. In addition to the FEMA required changes, I made a few minor housekeeping items as well, uh, clarifying submittal requirements for the applications for special permit, and then clarifying uses, um, in the overlay district to be allowed by right and through special permit. The bylaw included within this warrant has been reviewed by the Department of Conservation and Recreation and determined to be in full compliance with the FEMA requirements. Lastly, we have also created a new floodplain overlay district map, which depicts the limit of FEMA's new one-hundred-year floodplain, um, as required. I respectfully request your support for Article seventeen to maintain the town's compliance with FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, and I would be happy to answer any questions on Article seventeen.
Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends favorable action.
Any questions under Article seventeen, okay? We'll wait for you.
Paul Donarco, Seventeen Wythe Street. Bill, thank you for the presentation. Uh, and thank you for the explanations. It was appreciated. Um, for someone like myself, in my kind of condition, I mean, uh, predicament, I live along the river, so I fall smack dab in one of those floodplanes on there. Um, I do have FEMA as, uh, an insurance carrier. So if we don't approve this and we don't recognize the map, we don't have FEMA to go to, and that means, uh, private insurance will probably triple or quadruple in cost as to what I'm paying now. So for that reason, I'm going to support this article, and I ask all of you to support it as well, too, because you don't know how many people in this town are currently paying into FEMA for insurance for living next to a waterway or in a flood zone. As I was reading the myriad of information on the town website, I came across a piece of paper that, uh, information that says key points of the plan. What piqued my interest was the very last one. And I wanted to know how the Engineering Department and the Conservation Commission would handle public safety. And I'll read this, that was on this town website. The town aims to ensure public safety by reducing threats to life and property caused by flooding and to prevent public aid emergencies related to water contamination. My question to you, to the Conservation, and to this council before us, when is the Mill River from Farm Street to the confluence of the Saugus and Mill River going to be cleaned out to promote drainage? The river is at a historic, and in my case, thirty-five years. It falls within the four points. Please don't say it's not. Please don't say it's not. It says it right here, safety, public safety, and personal, and property. So that means my property doesn't count? Please don't say that. It doesn't, it's, please, go ahead. The
If you can answer that, Mr. Renaud, please, please, please answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Currently, it's not on any capital plan, as you know, but, um, it's something that we think is needed. Um, there are many permitting hurdles to make that happen, and I'm happy to work with the Conservation Agent and Commission to try to facilitate anything we can do.
I appreciate that. I mean, we're planning on a lot of rain next couple of days. I don't want to get flooded.
I, I can't get it done in that timeframe.
I know you can't. Thank you for your answers. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other comment on the motion under Article, where are we, seventeen?
Seventeen.
There being no, no further comment. Um, the motion before you is that the town, see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the program, and the motion for Mr. Renaud is a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Do I see any opposed? Am I missing anyone? No, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Renaud. Where am I? Hold on. Hold on. Ay, ay, ay. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by striking Chapter zoning bylaws, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Yeah, no, don't worry. So, no. Um, hey, thank you. Um, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in your program and described by Mr. Hogan. You are up.
All right, uh, good evening. Uh, Theo Knoll from the Planning Board. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by striking Chapter one ninety, Section twenty-two, A one F, accessory apartments in its entirety, and adding in its place within the zoning bylaw, Chapter one ninety, Section twenty-two, A one F, of the town, of the code of the town, the text shown in your handouts. Um, so. The, um, yeah, so, um, the, the reason for the handout um, and these changes, you can see in the, in the redlined, um, are that, uh, during, uh, during our Planning Board public hearings, um, a couple, a couple of changes were recommended, uh, after the fact, uh, of the, of the article being published in the warrant. So the motion here is to, uh, amend the, uh, and offer the, this zoning change, uh, in the handout, and you can see the
Just to be clear, you're not amending anything. You're presenting your initial motion.
Yes, precisely.
So just, so we don't go down that road again.
Yeah, um, no, thank you. Um, and, uh, the, the differences between the text in the, in the warrant that, that was published and the handout are, are redlined, so they're, they're very, they're very straightforward and obvious. The, uh, the, the changes specifically refer to, uh, changing our reference, uh, from ADU, um, as a, an acronym, to being consistent through the, through the zoning article, to refer to it as protected use accessory dwelling unit, uh, just for consistency's sake. And the second change is to update the, the language in the bylaw to, uh, fully, uh, include, uh, provisions affecting, potentially affecting existing accessory dwelling units. So, and those two changes are deleting the definition H, uh, which is, uh, what a prohibited regulation, and then in, uh, under three C, under procedural, uh, requirements, deleting text, uh, that refers to, uh, prior, prior, uh, ADUs, um, such that, uh, to remove any potential confusion. This, uh, this ensures that existing ADUs are updated and, uh, and full, fully in compliance as well as, uh, future new ADUs. And the
You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Sam? Thank you, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Elliott. I'm the town senior planner. I'm gonna go over briefly the background of the ADU bylaw and point out some of the very specific things that are, um, regulated by this proposed bylaw. So what is an accessory dwelling unit? In two thousand and twenty-four, many of you probably have heard of the Affordable Homes Act. It permitted by right one protected use ADU per property, which technically went into effect on February second, twenty twenty-five. I'm not gonna read, I'm gonna save time tonight and not read the entire definition. You can read it in your handout. Um, but the most important parts is that an accessory dwelling unit is considered a self-contained housing unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. Um, so it all needs to be under one roof or within one structure. So just to briefly go over the timeline of how we got here, um, Planning Board held multiple, um, public information sessions. They talked about it at, at a number of meetings, including their, their hybrid public information session on March eleventh, and then a formal public hearing, um, on April eighth. Uh, then, of course, now we're in front of you at Springtown Meeting, um, and the proposal is to remove the existing language for an accessory apartment, which is directly in conflict with the Affordable Homes Act provisions on accessory dwelling unit and the regulations from EOHLC, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Um, and then the proposed bylaw meets the state requirements, again, found within the EOHLC regulations, and adds some additional conditions, because the way that the regulations from EOHLC and the Affordable Homes Act were written is that it gives towns certain parameters that we can actually still require a special permit for, or certain components that we can regulate that you wouldn't be able to regulate without having a local, um, ADU bylaw. So what is the, what are we proposing on the existing, or I mean, on, on the proposal that's before you tonight? So by the Affordable Homes Act and the EOHLC regulations, nine hundred square feet is permitted by right. Um, to be consistent with other accessory structures that are permitted in Wakefield, you are allowed to, again, under the proposed ADU bylaw, um, go up to twelve hundred square feet, but that would only be through a special permit. So anything over nine hundred square feet, all the way up to twelve hundred square feet, would require a special permit, and for that permit to be granted, not just to be heard. Um, one, uh, protected use ADU is allowed per principal dwelling unit, so there is one per lot, um, which was also a option to be regulated by the EOHLC regulations. And, uh, it is permitted by right in all single-family zoning districts with a principal dwelling unit. So for Wakefield, that is the special single residence, single residence, general residence, um, medium residence, and, which I think, medium multifamily residence, and neighborhood business. Um, so if you have a residential structure that has the self-contained dwelling units and cooking and sanitary facilities, you are permitted to have one accessory dwelling unit, um, on that lot by right. So the setbacks under the proposed ADU bylaw are consistent with existing setbacks for attached structures as well as for detached, detached structures. Um, up here, I have a quick reference chart I pulled out of our, um, bylaw, so you could see what the front side and rear setbacks would be if someone were trying to construct in addition. If they're constructing a detached accessory dwelling unit, um, there would be setbacks consistent with what is found in Wakefield's code for accessory, or for accessory structures, which is seven point five feet from the side and rear property line. Um, that is consistent and required by EOHLC's regulations. If at some point in time, um, the town of Wakefield wants to go back and look at increasing the setbacks for a detached structure, that would apply to all accessory structures. You cannot single out, um, ADUs. Again, per the guidelines, uh, regulations, I'm sorry, from the state. Um, the parking requirements, if it's within half a mile of a transit station, there are zero spaces required. If it's over half a mile, uh, one space is required. No more, no less, just one space. And transit here is defined explicitly as a bus stop. Um, anywhere you are embarking or disembarking from transit, so a bus stop, subway station, or commuter rail station. And then if you are proposing to, uh, build one outside of that half-mile radius, or one of the half-mile radiuses, um, that you can see on the map, which I'll get to in a second, a site plan review would be required, um, and that would be reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals by ZBA. They cannot deny or, um, the ADU, but they will go in and possibly have conversations about, um, where that parking would be located and other components of the proposed ADU. The map we have up here shows where all of the transit stops are in Wakefield. So most of Wakefield has that half-mile radius. Um, there are only a handful of little areas that are white up there. The green spaces are the bus stops, and the purplish color, lavender color, um, what looks like kind of bluish to y'all, um, are the MBTA commuter rail stops, including down at Melrose Highlands, which is the one that's off the map at the very bottom. Um, and so if, uh, right now, a special permit is required for all accessory apartments, that will not be the case. Um, and that is not the case as of February second, twenty twenty-five. Um, but a special permit would be required if anybody is seeking relief from the as-of-right criteria such as parking setbacks, or if you're looking to increase over nine or nine hundred square feet, a special permit will always be required if it's being built within a floodplain. The other really big component that we are permitted to regulate through the EOHLC regulations, um, is short-term rentals. So here in Wakefield, and consistent with the, um, Affordable Homes Act, the goal is really to promote year-round housing versus short-term rentals, um, which contribute to housing shortages and affordability and all sorts of other issues that we're facing here. So the way that the bylaw is written is that it explicitly prohibits a short-term rental in a protected use accessory dwelling unit or any primary structure that has a protected use accessory dwelling unit on the lot. So that will at least help to, um, prevent the proposed ADUs from being turned into short-term rentals and help, um, address kind of market rate affordability, um, here in Wakefield. And then, that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions under Article eighteen?
Hi, Rebecca Anderson, thirty-two Mitchell Lane. So am I understanding correctly, you're saying that the P eight, P ADUs, um, have to, to meet the setbacks? What if there, it's being added as an addition to a house that has already been grandfathered um, from the existing setbacks?
Yeah, so the existing structure, i-if you read through the little handout, um, it does talk a little bit about, no, it explicitly talks talk a little bit about, no, it explicitly talks about and spells out that if you have an existing structure, you are not required to bring that existing structure into compliance. It would only be the addition component. So let's say you are in single residence, your side setback is 15, and your structure, because it was built prior to the zoning code being enacted with these numbers, only has a five-foot side setback. So any addition you would construct would need to have that 15-foot setback, but your primary structure would not need to go for a special permit to be legal non-conforming or any other term you might classify it as. That would be negligible and not addressed as part of this. It's explicitly permitted to, as long as you're not increasing the setback. Like if you were trying to go less than a five-foot setback off of the existing, that's where it would be a problem. Does that make sense?
So, sort of. So if, for example, someone is adding a second story to an existing structure, that second story would have to comply with the setbacks even if the first floor does not?
No, because it's within the building footprint of the existing structure. But I can defer to Tom Mullen if there is any further clarification, which is Town Council, SEL Council.
So when we're talking about setbacks, we are talking about how far from the lot line you can build. If you're talking about building up rather than out, setbacks aren't an issue.
The existing structure doesn't comply with the setbacks.
And what you just heard is the existing structure need not be changed in any way. So yes, I believe you could build up from that because you're not increasing the nonconformity which consists of an encroachment into the setback.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Dennis Clarity, 1 Harvath Road. How does this proposed regulation differ from the state regulation?
How is it different from the state regulation? So the local regulation that we have, we are permitted to regulate if there is a site plan review or not. So we have a site plan review required if there's a parking spot. There's also the ability to increase it over the 900 square feet. The state allows you to go by right up to 900 square feet. Anything over is up to the discretion of the local municipality and what they put in their bylaw. They also permit you to have a special permit required if it's in a floodplain. It's not explicitly required by the state regulations. It gives you the opportunity for that. It also allows you to regulate whether or not you want one or more structures. One has to be by right. Additional structures are potentially permitted by a special permit if the municipality chooses to offer that option. Here we are saying one and one only. Additionally, short-term rentals are something that are not explicitly prohibited by the state but are allowed to be regulated through a local municipality's bylaw. So we are explicitly prohibiting not just in the ADU but also in the principal dwelling so that somebody doesn't end up converting one or both to a short-term rental.
Short-term rentals are something that are not...
So the state regulations say you can do it by right. Do you, we still have that right to do it?
Yes, you have the right to do it as long as it is within the parameters that are spelled out in the bylaw, and as long as it's under 900 square feet. Anything over 900 square feet requires a special permit. Anything located within a floodplain is going to require a special permit. If you're not meeting the required setbacks or you don't want to meet the required parking on-site, then you would also need to go get a special permit. But let's say you can't, you don't, you're not required to have a parking space because you're within a half-mile radius, and what you're proposing is under 900 square feet and it meets all of the other required requirements, like the setbacks, then you could build it by right. You could go file a building permit tomorrow, technically.
Right here, now you're up, okay.
That's our difference.
Well, you guys can decide, I guess.
Amy Wall, Pleasant Street. Can I have some clarification on this? If we're putting these in, who's allowed to put them in? Is it every single household or is it single family?
The way that the state has written it is that it is permitted by right in all single-family zoning districts, which is defined as a district that allows single-family use by right or by special permit or some other form of discretionary zoning approval. So in Wakefield, as long as there is a principal dwelling unit, that doesn't matter if it's a one or a two unit or however many units. And it is within one of these zoning districts, the SSR, which is special single residence, general residence, multi-residence, middle, I can never remember what that one is, I'm so sorry, and neighborhood business. If it's within one of those parameters, then yes.
Okay. And do we have a number on how many dwellings that is?
How many dwellings meet this criteria? No.
Okay, so I believe Wakefield has approximately 10,000, give or take households?
11,000 and change.
Okay, so essentially 11,000 more homes could come in?
Not necessarily, because those households include people in multifamily buildings and apartment buildings.
Okay.
And we've had over, what, 2,000 units built in the last 10, 15 years, so...
Right, yeah, 2,000 too many. So, give or take the 11,000, I just did a quick Google search, it said about 6,700 were single-family homes that are in that district. I don't know if that number is correct or not, like I said, a Google search, so maybe 6,700 more homes?
Well, of course, it's possible, but there's still the parameters of where they would put it if they have the lot size and then the financial component of it, because building one of these is over $300,000 typically.
But it's plausible, yes. It's plausible, okay. And then, maybe 6,700 more homes? I'm just using that number again, 6,700 more cars.
Of course, it's possible, but there's still the parameters of where they would put it if they have the lot size. That is a state regulation. Unfortunately, that is the way it is, but if you have a problem with that, I would suggest you reach out to your local representative, because there's nothing we can do on a local level to discuss or regulate that component. We can technically take away all parking spots. We can be more generous than what the state is requesting, but we are trying to be consistent with that and address that by maintaining the one parking spot outside of the half-mile radius.
Okay, and if this gets voted down, what is the state threatening to do?
It'll just be allowed by right. If we say no, then they can be built up to 900 square feet, someone can get a building permit tomorrow, they can turn it into a short-term rental, both the accessory dwelling unit and the primary dwelling unit can be short-term rentals. So all of that could be done literally, I mean, technically, you could have gotten one as of February 2nd, 2025.
Okay, so basically our hands are tied.
Well, it gives us the opportunity to regulate them, and this is your chance to be able to regulate them. This is the most that we are permitted to do within the EOHLC guidelines. We can be, again, more generous than the EOHLC regulations are outlining, but we cannot be more restrictive.
Thank you.
You're up.
Ed Green, 238 Main Street. I've had a lot of experience with this, going back 51 years. I moved to Wakefield 51 years ago for this reason. In Malden, they announced we're going to put the orange line through Malden. Immediately, speculators came in, bought up two family houses, finished the basements, finished the attics, there was no place to park. My neighborhood doesn't look anything like it did when I grew up there. And, you know, it's, I came to Wakefield, it's a good town, but seeing this in writing, I said it's turning into Everett, Malden, and Chelsea, where a lot of my friends live. A lot of them got out because, for the same reason I did. We didn't like to be crowded, we liked to park in front of our own house or in our driveway. And speculators come in and do that. They buy up these homes, and you're telling me now it's a state law, we can't change it. I just learned that tonight.
Yeah, unfortunately, if you have an issue with it, the person really to reach out to is your state representative. The most I'm trying to put forward, representing the initiative of the Planning Board, is to regulate the components that we can and to reflect the concerns that were echoed both throughout MBTA communities and through all of the ADU meetings that the Planning Board did have, is that there's a concern with them being turned into short-term rentals by speculators. And the only way that we can regulate that is by including it in the bylaw, which is what's in front of the town tonight.
It happens gradually, but we have absentee landlords, they don't take care of the property, and that's what I saw happen, and that's why I left. But, you know, you can't be the only guy in the neighborhood cutting your grass, because the people who own the other properties don't live there anymore. So it's, you know, it has nothing to do with, you're talking about expanding the frequency of the commuter rail, having more trains come through, or having a turnaround up by 128 someplace. I mean, I'm reading all these things, there's no connection with this, affordable housing.
This was discussed in early 2024, possibly before that, that's when it first, the Affordable Homes Act first started getting discussed, and then I believe it was approved in summer of 2024. So I don't know that they're necessarily tied, they may be. I'm not privy to all of those different conversations. But again, this is the effort of the Planning Board to try to put something forward and recognize the concerns of the citizens and be able to regulate the components that we can here locally.
Thank you, but for whatever impact it has, I'm going to vote against it.
And any concern over absentee landlords, there are potential different avenues you can look at. This would not be one of them because it is not included in this component, but that's a different discussion that you can have with the town if you want to put together a citizen's petition to find different ways to regulate that.
Scott McCauley, 32 Alden Road. So just as I understand it, so the law itself is here, whether we want it or not, these are all what you have gone through to try and rein that in for us, is that correct?
Correct, the Planning Board, not myself alone.
I just had a quick question. On one of your slides, there was a, part of it had detached setbacks? So for standalone structures, they're allowed to be within seven and a half feet of the side of rear lot line, is that correct?
Yes.
So do these need to be permanent structures?
Permanent?
Yes.
Yes, it's explicitly spelled out in the bylaw that it has to have a permanent foundation.
Okay.
Whether it is a construction on-site, I don't know what they call those, like from scratch, where you're putting together everything, or a modular unit that's being brought into the site. Either way, it has to have a permanent foundation.
So if somebody could do some type of prefab thing coming in, as long as it has some type of foundation that it's sitting on?
Right, like if someone were to look at doing a tiny house trailer, you couldn't keep it on the wheels. It would need to have a permanent foundation, not on wheels.
So I guess what defines a permanent foundation? Is it just up on blocks?
It's explicit in the bylaw, and it refers to what is defined as a permanent foundation through zoning regulations.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, you mentioned that it cannot be short-term rental, so what is defined by short-term?
30 days or less.
30 days or less.
It's defined by the state.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Hi, Theo Knoll, 8 Fernwood Road, and a member of the Planning Board. The reason why we really, we supported this through the discussions, and I think a lot of the questions we got during our public hearings, during the discussions with other citizens, really was clarifying, I think, our rights as a town versus the framework that the state law is giving us. And to the other points, I think it's risky to conflate overdevelopment with accessory dwelling units. And I think it's risky also to conflate fears about, which are, mind you, entirely justified. And we had those questions come up during our meetings about transportation or about But I think the, we have the state law, and the point of the changes that Samantha, you've gone through, really is the town taking as much local control as we can, and that's, I think, a really advantageous thing for Wakefield, in the same way that we adopted inclusionary zoning, and we're using zoning strategically to increase our 40B stock. To the, I'd like you to, can you talk a little bit about site planning review? Because I think that might also help address the foundation question and some of the, you know, the concerns about some transience.
What specifically would you like to know about site plan review?
So can you describe what site planning review would be, who would do it, and sort of what that might look like?
Yeah, so site plan review only comes into play if there is a special permit required or if there's parking required. So again, if you're seeking relief from any of the as-of-right criteria, meaning you want to increase over 900 square feet, looking to reduce your setbacks or eliminate parking, or if it's in a floodplain, or if you are providing any parking on-site, then you would have to go through what is called a site plan review. So you have a site plan, so you would have pieces of paper that would have the proposed elevations, your information reflecting whatever changes you're making, if they're exterior changes, if they're interior changes, it would just be a floor plan, and then it would have what's called a site plan. So if you ever closed on a piece of property, typically you get a piece of paper that has your house drawn on it with the boundaries of your property. That is a very, very basic plot plan. A lot of times they're called mortgage surveys or mortgage plot plans. That would have, it would be something similar to that, probably a little bit more detail. And then it would have the location of your addition or your detached, or detached, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling unit, again, if you're not working within your existing footprint. All of that would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You would be scheduled for a public hearing, at which point then the Zoning Board of Appeals would review your application and potentially discuss the location of the parking, maybe some screening, maybe adjusting something that relates to those different components that you're seeking relief from. They cannot prohibit the construction of an ADU, and they cannot place what are considered prohibited regulations or unreasonable regulations on that ADU. So they couldn't require you to have, to be moving it and increase the setbacks larger than what they're permitted by right, or take away the right altogether or anything like that. So those are the different kind of components of very basic overview of what would be done through the site plan review process.
Senior Drive, my question. So basically, I'm going to piggyback on the question before. Let's assume that Wakefield will allow 6,700 additional housing. So that means it's going to be increased in fire department, police department, what's going to happen in our schools. I'm not even talking about the parking and congestion on the road. What Wakefield going to do about that? Are they going to increase the taxes to pay more police department and fire department? Because, you know, I understand the state trying to regulate all of that increases on the market, you know, we need housing, wonderful, but are they going to subsidize this somehow or it's going to all come out from our pocket?
Sam, Sam just went, Tom, can you answer that question? Oh, okay, I thought you were... Well, it seems like that sort of overlaps the, yeah, okay, sorry. All right, okay, Sam, you got it, yeah. Sam, you got it. You can...
There are no subsidies from the state. There are some different state programs, such as the House Modification Loan Program that offer, if you have somebody who is disabled or over the age of 60 in your household that you're looking to build an ADU for, there is a loan program that offers, I believe it's up to $50,000. Don't quote me on the price, please go look it up yourself, and if you meet all of the different criteria, but that is one avenue if you're looking to fund it. The other components, I can't speak to. Again, this is a state regulation, and we're looking to find ways to address it locally. And no part of this takes out any assessment or any valuation that a potential ADU would add to a parcel. This is just regulating the zoning components of the ADU.
I understand. So what's going to happen is we will have a lot of extra kids, and I believe our schools, they build right now, like this school and Wakefield High, that will be built on certain amount of student, right? What will happen with additional couple hundred kids that Wakefield will have? Are we going to send them to Melrose?
Can I just, can I just, can I clarify something here?
Yes, sir.
This regulation makes the state regulation more restrictive.
Okay.
Okay, so if we... So if we don't have that, it's more open-ended. Okay?
No. I understand. I'm not trying to vote against something. I'm just trying to see how town trying to see the future with all this additional housing, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, there's no fortune-telling ability. I wish I could give you more information, but we don't have that capability.
No, it's a minute. You've already been up, right?
Yep.
Okay. You're up next.
Rebecca Anderson, 32.
No, no, no. You've already been up. You get to, you have to wait. I didn't make the rules.
Sarah Murphy, 32 Crystal Street. I did just want to clarify again, because it seems like there is some confusion in the room. This is happening regardless of how we vote tonight.
All right.
Because the state has mandated it. What we are voting on is whether to control it more, that's a yes vote, or to control less, that's a no vote. So if you vote no, we don't have as much control as a town, and we're not able to restrict as much or more than the state would want us to restrict. Is that correct? Correct. Just want to clarify that, because it seemed like there was definitely some confusion. Also, just the tax question. If there are more people living in these units, presumably more people would be paying taxes to the town, is that correct?
I am not the tax assessor. Just putting that. And I also find it hard to imagine that.
Victor, come on up.
That, oh.
Boy, I found myself getting involved. Victor Santanello, you're a tax assessor, and I can guarantee you, they will be assessed and taxed.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. Johnny on the spot.
I also find it a little hard to imagine that there would be that many people with an extra multiple hundred thousand dollars to spend to build one of these. So I would sincerely doubt that there would be 6,700, you know, which was a made-up number to begin with, but additional unit. So I feel like that's unlikely, but also our hands are tied, and why not try to restrict this more when given the chance? Thank you.
You haven't been up yet, right, on this?
Correct. Yeah. Bob Mitchell, Six Paulding. I'm obviously not a fan of these state mandates, but this is not really here, the time to talk about that. I couldn't more disagree with the prior person who said, quote, "It's risky to conflate overdevelopment with ADUs." Wow. Anyway, my real question, my one question really comes down to Tommy Mullamay, and it's because of my ignorance on this law. Are there? I'm not so concerned about the state mandate. Within Wakefield, is there a height restriction on these suckers? Like, can you build a 10 by 10 room, 90 foot high? And if you do a, and just related to that, and if you do a conversion, let's say you have a one-story house, you slap, can you slap this thing on top to do a conversion? And can these things be in the front yard? Are my three questions.
It varies from the zoning code. I don't have it in here because it refers back to the.
Yeah.
So Bob, this doesn't affect the height restriction, which is in the zoning code now.
Okay. So, okay, so it would, okay, thank you. So, and these, and can these go in the front yard of an existing property?
They are required to meet all setbacks. So if somebody has a substantial setback, the way that it's written is, I don't believe that there are any restrictions.
Okay.
They don't have to be.
Because I just read something in here, it says no front yard placements. Detached ADUs cannot be located in front of the principal building. But it's the internet, so I apologize.
If, yeah, in the underlying code, I'm sorry, I don't know the underlying code off the top of my head, but if they cannot be located in the underlying code, then it would not be permitted. If an accessory, I'm sorry, if the accessory, if an accessory structure is not permitted in the front yard in our underlying code, an ADU, which would be an accessory structure, is not permitted in our front yard.
Okay.
But I don't know that off the top of my head, because I have not memorized the entire code. I am sorry.
Okay.
I have a good memory, but not that good of a memory.
Understood. It's complex, and I apologize for being ignorant of the legislation. So does anybody know if they can be put in the front yard, or? No?
No.
No? Okay.
Victor says no, and he was right on the last one, so.
We'll tack some more. Okay. But they can be done in a conversion, right? Just one last question. So if you have a one-story house, you could slap, you could call it an ADU, stick it on top?
Just as anybody could add any sort of addition on top of a structure, as long as it meets the zoning code, meaning it meets the height requirements? Yes.
You could call that an ADU. Okay, which might give you advantages, disadvantages.
Well, I mean, you still have to meet the criteria of an ADU. So you'd have to make sure that there's all of the cooking, sanitary, sleeping facilities are under one roof, you have any required egress, and then you would also have the required entrance either from a shared space or from a separate structure or separate entry on the exterior of the structure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Have you been up yet on this? No? Okay, you're up.
Hey, McCallum, 7 North Forest Street. First of all, thank you to everyone who's put in work on this. It's really appreciated. I myself live in a multi-generational household. There are currently three generations of our family living in this house. There has been four. So this kind of law is geared towards families like us that can't afford to get another house. There isn't another house. The market just isn't there. So having something like this, being able to build that ADU, is something that would allow a family to continue to grow without the challenges of the housing market. And while we don't have the means to necessarily go out and do this, it is nice to know that it is an option. And in terms of some things that were said earlier, I'd like you to just think about the fact that our population globally and locally has grown exponentially in the past 50 some-odd years. There's far more people than there is housing at the moment. So we need something like this to be able to provide something for the people who are here now. Where else would you like those people to go? Unfortunately, it's the reality of what's happening everywhere right now. I personally would like nothing more than to have more room around our residence and some peace and quiet, especially from everyone's lawn mowers and leaf blowers on a Saturday morning. But I also recognize that that's not the reality of the world that we're living in today. So I'd rather have a say and have some constriction on what this law is than to leave it far more open-ended. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Second time around, two minutes, okay?
Yep. That's a quick one. Rebecca Anderson, 32 Mitchell Lane. What's the enforcement mechanism for the short-term rentals? I will defer that to town council and.
Yeah, the enforcement mechanism for any part of the zoning bylaw is the building inspector. If the building inspector learns of a violation, he sends a cease and desist order. He can fine. And if the fines don't work, I bring an injunctive action on his behalf.
Okay. Thank you. And just to make it clear, right now in Wakefield, we do not have anything regulating, either explicitly permitting or prohibiting short-term rentals. So this would be the first thing that we have on our books, explicitly prohibiting them in a specific area or technically tied to a specific use.
Deborah Fox, 12 Alyssa Drive. You just said we do not have anything on the books for short-term. We did. We came and filled this auditorium to not have Airbnbs. And suddenly, a few years later, the building inspector was supposed to have been doing cease and desist audits. He put them out there, nobody ever went after them, not one. And now you're saying, we never had it? We did have it. We filled this hall, everyone voted it down. Former selectman, Peter May, was very involved with it. We said, we're not going to have Airbnbs in town. People still had them. The building inspector was supposed to do cease and desist. He said he did them, but he was too busy to follow up. So yes, we did have it. And then all of a sudden, very quietly, oh, we couldn't do that. We don't have it. So I disagree with what you're saying. I'm sure Mr. May will remember us being here, and, right? We did. What happened to it, Steve? Is the same thing going to happen? You're saying we can't have it? This says we can't have it. Same thing with the vote we did before. What happened, Mr. Mullin?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Do you have a question that you would like?
I do.
Okay.
I want to know if.
You direct it to me.
I want to know.
Just a minute. Mr. Mullin, can you answer that question? If you can.
So if your question is, are there sometimes zoning violations that aren't corrected? I'm sure that's the case. But it's despite the best efforts of our building inspector, who does an excellent job.
So what are we going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Well, that's why it's included explicitly in this particular bylaw.
So wasn't the other one?
It is explicitly spelled out.
The other one was due. It was done by a very popular vote.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Kristen McCray, 776 Main Street, Wakefield. I now have a question. Is there anywhere in the town that you can have a short-term rental?
Please hold. He's just looking it up.
Yeah, I guess I wondered if you could ever do it.
Yeah, Tom would have to research that. I mean, it's not something right off the, that he has at his fingertips right now.
So I mean, it's possible to rent your home somewhere in the town for less than 30 days. Is that correct?
He, like I said, Tom doesn't have an answer. He can research it and get back to you. Okay?
I think my.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Well, excuse me. Hello, Mr. Lieber. Hi, how are you? You might be able to answer this question? Well, thank you. Okay, as chairman of the bylaw committee. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lieber. We just don't have free strolls to the podium.
Sorry.
Just want to make sure.
Daniel Lieber, chair of the bylaw review committee. This issue has come up both in the current bylaw review committee and in the prior instance from 2016. The issue is, has been addressed a few different ways. In short, it is not a permissible use. And because it is not defined in the current code as a permissible use, it has been determined, and the, at least bylaw review has been advised, that it is an impermissible use. As for the enforcement mechanisms, I leave that to town council for how to address it. But it is something that was deliberated and discussed at length with multiple council. And this would be the first time that it has been explicitly added to the, to the bylaws as an explicitly impermissible use.
Thank you, Mr. Lieber.
Thank you. And the one other question I had is, do we know, have any other communities basically tried to undo the state law? Is there anyone trying to? I think a lot of people weren't aware of the state law. And I'm just wondering if there are going to be communities that are not going to adopt bylaws, but rather turn to undo what the state law has.
Sam, do you know?
No. I heard about this before I even got hired. When I was out in Colorado, it was all over the news. And not planning news like regular, everyday.
But you don't know of any current towns that are trying to overturn the state regulation? That would be a no.
No.
Thank you.
I do not know of any other towns.
No. The answer's no.
Doug Butler, 220 Main. Just a number of towns, though, on the flip side of this, a number of towns such as Burlington, I think Bedford, I think a number of towns have taken actions similar to what we're taking in terms of approving bylaws. I had a question around the special permit around parking. So if one added an ADU, but didn't really change their driveway at all, but still let the person park there, is that considered adding, offering parking to the person?
I would have to defer to the building inspector. If there is no parking space required, because it's within a half-mile radius, then no parking space is required. Of course, it behooves someone to provide it, but that is not required by the bylaw. As for how somebody is parking or where they're parking on the property, that should be reflected when somebody is looking to go get a permit, at which time the building inspector will review that plan.
I just wasn't, I didn't understand then what this, is the special permit really only for going, you know, 900 to 1200 and flood zone? Or was there a parking-related?
So there's, there's two different things. If you have, related to parking. So if you have parking that you're required to provide because you're outside of the half-mile radiuses that are on this map, then there's something called a site plan review. It is not a full-blown special permit, but they are reviewing where things are located effectively on your property. So that is required. And then if you are seeking relief, that's when you would get a special permit. So if you're trying to get rid of your parking requirement, if you want to reduce your setbacks or increase your height or something along those lines, or increase over the 900 square feet, or if it is in a floodplain, then you would be required to go get, to apply for a special permit and have one approved prior to construction.
And just for the record, I believe there were like four or five Airbnbs in town were really not being overrun currently. But I think we could, if we add this bylaw, it really prevents an awful lot of potential Airbnb, small Airbnb units being built. So I think that's reason one. If you want to oppose like that sort of thing, then I would vote for it.
Scott McCauley, 32 Alder Road. So I think what Ms. Fox was referring to earlier is that this town, this body had voted at one point to ban Airbnbs in Wakefield. And my understanding is that it went in as a bylaw, but at some point, the language that was contested and that was pulled back? I just was wondering if that, if my recollection of that is correct. Steve, do you know? And that's why it's not in place?
My recollection is that we had a bylaw that required a special permit to have, call them Airbnbs, short-term rentals, and the body did vote that down. Totally. So there was no special permit. But I think the ZBA may have made, done something else. Maybe Mr. McGrail's going to talk on that? Maybe not. But no, that was what happened. Is that, I frankly was a proponent of a bylaw. I wanted to control Airbnbs by special permit, but I think that people were afraid they couldn't rent out their room if the Pope came. Maybe that's more appropriate now, so.
And then we voted not to have.
Right, not to have it, yeah.
Airbnbs. But somehow that got clawed back at some point. So that's why I think there's some confusion with that. Thank you. Mr. McGrail.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian McGrail, 81 Outlook Road. Just to set the record straight, it was 2015 that there was an article brought to this town meeting to regulate short-term rentals via special permit process. That article failed at town meeting. And that, so it's not true that it passed. That failed. And subsequent to that, the building inspector tried to enforce, implement, or send out enforcements saying that Airbnb-type short-term rentals were either classified as a hotel or a lodging unit under our bylaw. That failed. So, so the building inspector, his enforcement efforts failed in that regard. It's not that he just dropped them and did not have time to pursue them. There's a long history of this, but it did fail back in 2015.
Any further discussion? Under Article 19. Tommy, is this? This is just majority, huh? Yeah, that's what I said, simple majority. Okay. All in favor of the motion under Article 19? Raise your hands. Eighteen, sorry, eighteen, sorry. All right, all opposed. Motion carries. Article 19. Now, Article 19 is a citizen's petition, and I just want to make a few, draw your attention. It was transcribed with some mistakes that I will point out. They are mostly. They are mostly pronouns, uh, nothing more than that. So I will read the, the, the portion I'm going to read. Uh, to see if the town will vote to approve a town meeting a- action to be recorded in Chapter A, A seven thousand, seven hundred and four miscellaneous town meeting votes of the town code, which action shall provide as follows. Prohibition, prohibition against using town resources to enable violations of human rights and international law by Israel for as long as the state of Israel remains in violation of human rights as it has been determined by the International Court. You can read the rest. Now, let me say, on, on line five, it says, "The opinion of July ten, two thousand twenty-four, in case one eighty-six." That should be nineteen. On line seventeen, it says, "In fulfilling the contract," it should be "in fulfilling that contract." On line nine twenty-two, it says, it says, um, op, it said, let me get this more so you can understand. "Or would disrupt essential town operations or would cause," not "case," would cause a material increase. And on line twenty-five, it says, it says, "Notwithstanding any foregoing section of the action," it should be "this action." Now, I will just, just, just so I can, we've had similar um articles to this, and I will insist upon decorum. I don't care where you stand on this. No personal attacks. It's about the article itself and the, and the, and the factors in there. Uh, and can you spell your name for, uh, Betsy?
Yeah, Marco, M.A.R.C.O.
She's right here, she's right here, turn this way.
Uh, Marco.
M.A.R.C.O.?
Yeah.
Your last name?
Sukar, S.U.K.K.A.R.
Okay.
Two Galvin Circle in Wakefield. Two Galvin Circle?
Two Galvin Circle.
And that's your motion? You don't have to read the whole thing. You're going to read the. Yeah, okay, all right, just trying to see how we're doing here. You're up.
Thank you.
You want to, you want to read your motion?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, sir. All right, Article eighteen, is a prohibition against using town resources.
Got to keep your voice up.
Oh, sorry. "Is a prohibition against using town resources to enable violations of human rights and international law by the state of Israel."
And as set forth in the article itself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, go ahead, you're up.
Thank you.
Ten minutes now, right?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. You can't yet.
Why?
Because, and believe me, we've had this discussion over the last couple of weeks in depth, John. Um, Dan Lieber, myself, Steve, Tom, uh, we've discussed this. And Tom, if you want to, Tom, you, Tom, will you address this? The charter provides that no action can be taken by motion until after the motion in the presentation has occurred. Okay? So as soon as he finishes, it's, it's, then, then we can move, okay? And, and believe me, Mr. Lieber, who's, who's the bylaw king, we've discussed this in depth. So, um, this is not something I'm just ruling off the top of my head, John, okay? Thanks. Okay, Marco, you're up, ready?
Thank you. Was this a local issue that has to be presented to the town meeting? In regards to how we use our own motions in the town to enable town resources, federal fundings, how we enable our own resources to be used in regards to building roads, schools, and hospitals?
Got to keep your voice up.
Oh, sorry. "In the ways in which how our town uses resources, fundings, in regards to how this money has been enabling genocide in the Middle East, especially in regards to the Palestinians, people, the Lebanese, the Syrian, and many others in that region. These rights cannot be uncounted for, cannot be ignored. Human rights should be enabled for everyone in any place on the planet. No matter if, in, in regards to their religion, their race, identity, no matter what. I fully believe that this article can help this town alleviate our resources that can really try to show to others across the state, this country, et cetera, and how we can use these resources for other means except genocide, occupation, apartheid around the world. This article itself isn't only meant to s- single out Israel. It can use for any other country in the world. In regards to Saudi Arabia, Iran, Turkey, how those own countries have been using your own genocidal practices against Armenian people, the Kurds, all around the Middle East, other ethnic groups. So as I, when I spell this motion, how we can use our town resource in a better light. In accordance to the ICJ, it's the International Court of Justice. It's a international body that has accused Israel of violating international law and human rights. This organization is a cornerstone in how the UN qualifies and how they precisely accurate or articulate genocidal practices and apartheid, similar to the one used in South Africa." So number one, I don't believe the United States nor Donald Wakefield is trying to pursue Israel bonds that are used by security forces in Israel, by other armed companies and organizations in the state. In regards to how town boycott companies are complicit, many organizations, many companies, such as Google, Amazon, and many others, have used their technology in regards to AI tools, identification mechanisms to single out people in regards to being Palestinian, Lebanese, or Syrian, especially used by Israeli technology firms. I think United States, and especially in Wakefield, we can use better mechanisms such as Canvas or Blackboard because Google is operated as a tool in our schools, especially in high school, middle school, and elementary school. So how would these initiatives be affected towards the town? I believe that the town could be.
Got to keep your voice up.
I think a town could be given at least a year or two to understand how town resources can be used other, in other means, such as how different companies or different alternatives can be used, such as Staples, which is a complicit using their mechanism for genocide. I understand that the Wakefield Police doesn't train directly with Israeli forces, but many other police forces around this country, around the state, have been using training mechanisms with Israeli forces. I think it's permissible that we should try to understand and try to learn what type of mechanism they use in Israel. How are these units brought up? Because years prior, George Ford was killed. Many people have been killed by police brutality. Where does it come from? How can we really try to show and try to operate the police units in a really effective way, not just to protect ourselves and our communities, but how police conduct can be done and how can it be changed for the better? Also in the state, there is the transfer, say pension fund, quote-unquote, or as Prit. And the Prit system acts to, it actually acts saying that any town or municipal um organization or community has every right to try to um distance themselves from companies that permitting weapons such as military aid to the Israeli army. Thank you. And our last little slide here, I just want to show how in regards to the ever-changing landscape of this country, many young people like myself can see genocide for what it truly is, can see how human lives and decency have been lost, especially in Gaza. More than fifty-two thousand people have been killed in regards to Israeli bombs, mass starvation, and other forms of genocide. Lastly, in the Gaza Strip, more than three hundred thousand kids are raised of hunger and starvation due to Israel blocking all forms of aid, such as medicine, food, and water into the Gaza Strip. As of now, hundreds upon hundreds of aid trucks are currently held up on the Rafa Sideri Shem border, rotting away. Kids are dying of starvation. How is a moral and ethical principle like this, why isn't it going through? What kind of resources we use any means else? Why can't it go to this town? I have been to many meetings like this before, hard to tell us in debt. We need more funding. Really sending out seventeen billion dollars to Israel is what you want to do as a country, as a state, as a community? I don't think so. This money should be used here, in Wakefield, not somewhere else to feed someone else's war. Thank you.
Mr. Lieber.
Thank you very much. Daniel Lieber, One Elm Street. Thank you, Moderator Carroll. My fellow citizens, I stand here as a testament to our ability to bring forth petitions to our government. This part of democracy is important, even as we just listened to a presentation that seeks to harm ourselves and the people of Israel while doing nothing to effectuate the return of the hostages, including Americans and Israelis still held by Hamas. I have tremendous empathy for all who are killed and maimed in conflict. The conflict in Israel can be viewed in the complexities of Israeli politics or the simplicity of those who have never been to the true melting pot of the Jewish state, where Jews, Muslims, and Christians alike, along with others from many different backgrounds, have lived for over a thousand years. I'm not here to defend the current Israeli government policies. As in our country, there have been substantive and appropriate protests throughout Israel over political disagreements, including involving the judiciary. Make no mistake, to simplify this article and without attributing this to our neighbors, the founders of the boycott, divest, and sanction movement against Israel want the destruction of Israel and the destruction of the only homeland of the Jews, which is why it is inherently anti-Semitic. I hope we can come together in our frustration for wars that are being waged by Hamas, by Hezbollah, by Houthis, and others against civilians in Israel, in Lebanon, in Syria, and beyond. Genocides have occurred in Europe, in Darfur, in Sudan. The use of civilians as human shields in Gaza, in Ukraine, and other places is worthy of our taking action to get our federal government to address these horrors. The proposal made before this body is inappropriate for our town. As described, the purpose of this article is not merely to take political stand, but to take an action that harms us. It is based on concepts over which we would not only hurt ourselves in many ways, including financially, and making our neighbors be less safe as more families get put into harm's way locally and in Israel. This is an issue to be brought up at the federal level with our congressional representatives, president, and the executive branch. It is still not appropriate for town meetings to take action on this matter, and I therefore move to indefinitely postpone this question. As Pope Leo XIV said earlier today in his acceptance, peace be with you.
Is there a second on the motion? Do you have that, do you have that in writing? Excuse me. Excuse me. Dan, do you have that in writing?
I do.
At the end of your thing. If you'd just bring that down for Betsy so we have it written. Is there a second on the motion to mo- lay, lay, are you laying it on the table, Dan?
It's indefinite postponement.
Indefinite postponement, okay. Now, that means that the, now you can speak on whether this motion should be indefinitely postponed. Not a whole harangue about the merits of the, they've, I understand it's difficult to separate, but I want folks to understand we've done this before. Should this motion be laid on the table or should it not? Does anyone want to speak to that?
Point of order, I move for paper ballots in that case.
Paper ballots? You don't have any paper ballots here, do you? Right, wait, wait, so we have to have to take a motion on paper ballots, right, Tom? Yeah. Two-thirds, two-thirds, right. So, no, just, it's worse than that, huh? All right. Is there a second? Thank you, Jonathan. I jumped to, I jumped ahead. Is there a second on the motion for paper ballots? There we go. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right.
So our charter provides with respect to secret ballots, "If a motion is made and seconded to conduct a secret ballot on any main motion under an article, and such motion for a secret ballot is supported by ten percent of those voting, then the vote on such main motion shall be taken by secret ballot. The vote on the motion for a secret ballot shall be conducted by secret ballot."
So, and, and understand, the motion that you're asking for secret ballot is not on this motion. It's not on his motion. It's on Dan's motion of whether we should lay on the table or not, okay? All right?
Correct.
Okay, and you're still going forward with that?
As long as he's moving forward on silencing free speech, yes.
As long as he's doing what?
Moving forward.
His motion is to lay this, lay this motion on the table.
For indefinite postponement.
Oh, indefinite postponement, I'm sorry, sorry, right, sorry. Okay, well, okay, Betsy, you ready?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Oh, okay, I'm blocking the secret ballots. Tellers.
Tellers, I need you.
Okay, oh, hold on. Yeah, yeah, hold on. Okay, okay, so all pay attention now. All pay attention now.
So, as I quoted, the, the rule requiring two paper ballots applies to any main motion. But under Robert's rules, a motion to indefinitely postpone is not a main motion, it's a subsidiary motion. So I think we can, with respect to the motion for paper ballots on the motion for indefinite postponement, have a show of hands rather than a paper ballot. Okay?
Okay. So the motion, let me see, make sure I get this correct, Tom. Yeah, so what happens now is we're going to take a motion, we, we, I'm going to take account to see if we are going to call for paper ballots, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and that doesn't have to be by paper ballot because this is a subsidiary motion. All in favor of doing this motion by paper ballot, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, the motion doesn't carry, so we're not going to do paper ballot. Back now, uh, do you, do you want to speak to his motion to lay on the table besides? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, all right, all right. Indefinite postponement, they're kind of the same. Okay, um, anything else on?
Well, he cut the line. I want to give him some slap, some shame for that, but.
What, pardon me?
I have nothing against, that I can say against the motion.
Okay, all right, then. You have nothing against his motion? Okay.
I do, but nothing that I can substantially give you that would.
Okay, all right. Do you have a reason we shouldn't lay it on the table? That's what I'm asking you. Indefinite postponement, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have, do you have a reason that we should, we should not move on, on indefinite, the motion on indefinite postponement?
Because there are people who would like to speak on this issue, and he jumped the line to shut it all down.
Okay, well, I don't think he jumped the line, he was, just got, got there first, okay?
Not, not true, but that's okay.
He was there first.
I was there.
You were standing over there, okay?
I was, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Dan was first. Well, then you know what? What do you, then you can speak on the main motion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, I would like to say that the title of this article is prohibition against using town resources to enable violations of human rights and international law. Yes, by Israel, but also by anyone or anywhere. This is not against the Jewish community or any religion for that matter. This is, as put, "A prohibition against using resources to enable violations of human rights." There is nothing anti-Semitic about being against oppression and genocide because make no mistake, what is currently happening in Palestine is genocide. While I oppose violence and condemn the Hamas attack of October seventh, you cannot ignore the long-term oppression and conflict in the region. Just as not all of us here agree with and support all of our government's decisions and actions, the same can be said around the globe, especially in areas that do not have strong democracies. The Palestinian people are not Hamas. Israeli people and the Jewish community are not the Israeli state. So, I ask you, why would you want town resources going towards human rights violations? Again, this is not religious or political to say what is currently happening is genocide. While none of us here can begin to suggest solutions or have a say in their geopolitics, but we can do our part by speaking out against oppression and genocide. And nothing speaks louder in our society than money. We have a say in where our money goes and where it does not. Netanyahu and the Israeli strait, state have been relocating and oppressing the Pal- Palestinian people for decades. They are pushing families out of their homes and blocking humanitarian aid. They are actively carrying out an ethnic cleansing. Israeli forces are not defending themselves against the average people. They are and have been the attackers and oppressors. How would you feel if a strange family suddenly showed up to your home and said that it's now theirs and you were evicted immediately? No time to collect belongings, no chance to appeal, just kicked out and told to go away. Where would you go? What would you tell your kids? To continue any purchasing or investing in Israel is to continue support of what is happening to the real suffering of real people. After the Allies defeated the Nazis in World War Two, we collectively said, "Never again." Well, here we are again. Did we mean it when we said "never again," or was it all just lip service? So, this is our chance, Wakefield, to speak out, to condemn genocide and ethnic cleansing. Where do you stand? Which side of history are you on?
Okay, I, I apologize, I didn't see you were standing there. Really, I didn't, okay? Thank you. So, now, we're back now, no, 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 even though you're raising your hand. Now, we are back on Dan's motion to indefinitely postpone. Uh, applause, because I got it right, thank you. So, does anyone want to speak on Dan's motion to indefinitely postpone this? Okay, you're up, okay. Indefinitely postpone now.
So, if I am supporting this motion, I can still speak?
Well, yeah, you can speak, but you have to identify yourself first.
Okay, of course. My name is Lena Feldman. I live on thirty-four Holland Road in Wakefield. Uh, first of all, I am very discouraged that the political issues are brought to the discussion at the town meeting. I think there are no towns in our country which should discuss political issues, especially the Middle East politi- uh, politics at the meeting. However, I didn't bring it up, I, but I just want to say what I want to say. So, in two thousand and five, Israel completely left Gaza. Israel withdrew its military forces and settlers from the Gaza Strip in August, September of two thousand and five.
I know. Lena, we do this every year. On, whether the motion should, we should indefinitely postpone, I understand if you could, if you could stick towards, you don't think, you, you're on the right track there. You don't think this should be brought up, you don't think it should be there. So, try and keep it to indefinite postponement, okay? Do you understand?
Yes, I do.
We talked about it the other night, so.
Okay.
And help me out here.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, I just want to bring to your attention, uh, a few issues which we should not purchase if we are boycotting Israel. I didn't, I wouldn't mention too many, I promise. So, first of all.
No, 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 no. Should we, should we vote for indefinite postponement, or should we allow debate?
Yes, we should.
We should do what?
We should vote for indefinite postponing.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, you got your point made there, okay. Anybody else on indefinite postponement?
James Serone, thirty-three Oak Street. Um, I understand the sentiments. I think it's unconscionable to prevent discussion on this issue before a vote, especially when someone who cares deeply about an issue brings a proposal to the table and very bravely stands up in front of this town hall, um, and presents this proposal. I think that it's, um, it, it gets my heart beating when, when, when I hear someone, um, table something so that we can't discuss it before we can vote on it. And then we can move on, um, when we vote on it. Voting is what it's all about, and so, um, I encourage everyone to go against this motion.
Uh, Scott Farber, twelve Quail Run. I am for, uh, postponement, although I do have a question that I hope can be answered. This is the third, um, town meeting we've had where this topic had been brought up, and this particular one is almost identical to the one from the last town meeting. It was my understanding by postponing it then that it was not to be brought up again, so I'm asking the question of, is this, does this do nothing to keep this from coming up again and again at every town meeting?
Yeah, Tom.
Uh, there is a statute that forbids a zoning amendment, which has been voted down, from coming back for a period of two years unless various things happen. That has no application here, because this is not a zoning amendment. And the actions of one town meeting cannot bind a future town meeting. So, nothing we can do here tonight can prevent petitioners from putting a petition article on future town meeting warrants.
Mr. McCauley, on the motion.
Scott McCauley, thirty-two Waller Road. Uh, I am in favor of, uh, Mr. Lieber. Um, my understanding, and I don't know if anybody's here in, in U.S. law, but under U.S. law, it's illegal to comply with boycotts that are unsanctioned by the U.S. I don't know, somebody answer that question for me. I'm reading Duke University here, and there's a couple of other universities that have stuff listed too, so I don't know if we can legally even do this, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement? Majority, correct? Yeah. All in favor of indefinite postponement, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries, it's indefinitely postponed. And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes. You up? You want to say something? Okay. Town councillor, Maureen Butts, would like to address the audience.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve this town meeting with thanks to the town clerk, town moderator, WCAT, and the citizens of Wakefield. Also, will take chair's prerogative and thank Steve Mayo for seventeen years as town administrator. Please join us on Sunday, June first, at twelve P.M. to celebrate Steve's retirement.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? And as I say at the end of every meeting, thank you to WCAT for the fabulous job that they do, okay? C.A.T., yes. Alright, thank you.